Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if you would please stand. Go ahead, Councilman Taylor, salute to our flag.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for our prayer.
Please.
Let's bow our heads. Father, we thank you for giving us this great opportunity to come together today to make decisions for our community, just give us wisdom to do so, and continue to bless these leaders who stand here today to guide us through many opportunities in order for our community to thrive. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Coleman. Call to order our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting of June 18th. We don't have any other announcements, community announcements or recognitions. Third item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the public works meeting of June 4th. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Submit your votes, please.
All votes are in.
Let's see the votes. unanimous approval of all those council present. With that, our Public Works Authority meeting is adjourned, and call to order our city council meeting of June 18th. Consent agenda items A, B, C, and D. A is approval of the city council meeting of June 4th. B is the approval of a budget amendment number three, which amends general fund, fire fund, grant fund, and airport fund. C is the approval of an amendment for corporate property lease for hangar site 24D and 24E at the airport. And D is the approval of our city and county defense agreement between the city of Guthrie and Logan County Board of Commissioners. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
So moved.
And a second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion about those items? Submit your votes, please.
All votes are in.
See the votes. unanimous approval from all those present to approve the consent agenda items A through D. Item number three is a public hearing to determine property identified by resolution 2019-11. This is a property located at 117 and 121 East Oklahoma.
I tried to put together a little PowerPoint on this. As Mary indicated, the public hearing deals with the property at 121 East Oklahoma and 117. We did provide notice to the property owner that we were having a hearing that would consider adopting a resolution condemning the property as unsafe and dilapidated structure and setting a timeline to address it. Of course, sometimes it comes down to a question of historic preservation versus demolition or historic value versus economic value. Sometimes those things work out, sometimes they don't. There's too big a difference. The Burr lines have acquired another building at 211 East Oklahoma Avenue and are in the process of renovating it. To date, they've expressed no intentions to refurbish the two existing buildings at 117 and 120 East Oklahoma. They have been reminded as the property owners, they are responsible for securing cleanup and potentially the future demolition of the two buildings if they're not rehabilitated. First concern was, of course, securing the perimeter, and there was a fence put up around the property. That was a rental agreement for six months, and through June 17th, I believe, the bill was a little over $2,400. We have, of course, sent that invoice to the property owner, and however we deal with this property tonight, until it's finally resolved, that will be a reoccurring cost is maintaining a fence around the property to secure the perimeter so no one gets injured or hurt. Potential outcomes tonight, of course, number one, restoration, rehabilitation. I think that's probably the preferred option of everybody in the community, that that happens and the two buildings be restored, whether that be by the current owners or through some acquisition by a private investor or a community group. If there is a group comes forward and proposes restoration, I think the type of things that will be important to the city council will be one that the entity needs to submit a plan of action with a timeline for completion. And in there, the first step would be immediately to stabilize the building and remove any debris that's not going to be used in the renovation process, and then, of course, restoration of both structures. And then I think the city council would be interested in the entity being able to document the source of revenue that they're going to have to do that project. So those are the kind of questions if there's going to be a proposal on renovation. What's the plan? How long is it going to take? Where are the resources going to come from? How long do you wait? What's reasonable timeframe to allow for renovation? Then if that doesn't occur, the other potential outcome is demolition, removal of debris and fill the basements before the building can be demolished. It's in the historic district, and so we would have to have consent from the Historic Preservation Commission for the demolition. Of course, it's the property owner's responsibility to clean up and demolish it if it's not renovated. Again, how long does the city wait? Option B is for the city to use the same condemnation process for unsafe and dilapidated structures we use for other private residents in the community, and that's under a state statute. And if the city gets to the point that they have to tear it down and hire a contractor, an invoice is sent to the property owner. If it's not paid, then it goes on the, it's recorded at the county and becomes similar to property taxes. And the third option under demolition is to do something similar to what we did with Banner School property, where the city does the cleanup and demolition. The city obtains property ownership, and the city would be interested in some cost participation from the owner if that option is pursued. The resolution, I would point out, that is up for consideration after this public hearing. Traditionally, we give homeowners 30 days to complete their action after the resolution's adopted. Of course, this timeframe, state resolution can be modified or extended by the city council. So clearly, the timeframe for a project like this may be different than the 30 days that you would give for residential structure, and so that before adoption of the resolution, the city council might want to give consideration of that and adjust that timeframe in the resolution before it's adopted. And then I'd point out in section four of the resolution, when it's adopted, we record it at the county, so that that puts a notice to everybody in a lien on the property, so if we do have to demolish it and use city funds, our lien on the property would be ahead of other liens filed later. And that puts any potential buyers, investors, on notice that there's pending action on the property. If the resolution is adopted, the full range of options, including restoration, real rehabilitation, are still available. Historically, when we condemned residential structures, when the homeowners came before the city council that they want to renovate or rehabilitate their homes rather than tear them down, and they come forward with a plan, the city councils work for them with them, and resolution might say 30 days, but the council can extend that as long as there's progress shown. That same scenario could play out here. If there's a group that plans proposed renovation, even if the resolution condemning the structure's adopted, the city council can work with that group and agree to reasonable timeframes before the city takes any action on demolition for that group to implement their plan for restoration, and then once it's restored, then we would take it off the condemnation list. Again, if it's adopted, potential buyers and investors are put on notice that there's a pending action on the property. And also, if the resolution's adopted, it gives the city council more leverage to start setting target dates for completion of any agreed to plan of action, and the city council can always extend the deadline if they feel substantial progress is being made. This was the original concept for the proposed Guthrie outdoor entertainment venue that has been discussed, and in that one, we were using Wentz and looking at purchasing the Powell Building. If for some reason this building is not, the two Burr line buildings are not restored, and we're looking for some readaptive use of the property, if restoration is not feasible, this revised concept, we would not have to purchase the Powell property, so that money could be used for part of the cost of the demolition. We would slide the project to the west. We would still have Wentz, and it would be a little bit narrow project, but we could continue to look at consideration of an outdoor entertainment venue in Wentz between Oklahoma and Harrison. Some options there would be to plant a permanent Christmas tree if this was what ended up being done with the property for Territor Christmas, where you actually have a Christmas tree rather than a regular tree to put lights on, and we could possibly incorporate this project in with moving forward with tearing out the bridge on Harrison and redoing that street in front of the stadium. With that, I would suggest we open the public hearing and allow people to have a chance of input for the city council have discussion.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that information. We have some individuals that have identified that they would like to speak to this issue. Susan Guthrie, would you like to go ahead and lead the way? If you would, just come to the microphone, identify yourself and your address, and we are limiting to...
I'm lagging on, because I certainly can't see in the dark.
We are limiting to five minutes.
Okay. Well, I'm Susan Guthrie Dunham, and I don't live in Guthrie any longer, but Guthrie is near and dear to my heart and will always be. I would like to first read a letter. The National Trust for Historic Preservation has been contacted about this dilemma, and it says, "Dear members of the Guthrie City Council, I write today on behalf of the National Trust for Historic Preservation regarding the proposal before you to raise two significant historic structures in downtown Guthrie's National Historic Landmark District, which have been damaged by fire. Demolition is forever, and the National Trust would strongly encourage that the city exhaust all other options before taking that irreversible step. The materials, craftsmanship, and authenticity embodied in older buildings cannot be replaced. Additionally, the loss of these buildings would erode the integrity of what is a remarkably intact downtown historic district. The National Trust supports efforts to redevelop these buildings and so that they can again contribute to Guthrie's economy and to telling parts of its rich history." If you Google, there's two levels. You have a National Registered District, which is mostly the old, original township, and then you have a National Historic Landmark District, which is the downtown, which these two buildings are in the landmark district. If you Google it, a National Historic Landmark are historic places that hold national significance. The Secretary of the Interior designates these places as exceptional because of their abilities to illustrate U.S. heritage. Today, we almost have 2,600 NHLs in the United States. Now, 2,600, that's not a whole lot of NHLs when you consider Boston, Philadelphia, DC. I mean, of course, we know that the East Coast has 100 more years of history to deal with than we do, but to be a part of an NHL designation is significant. I would ask, in listening, I've spent a good bit of my life working on financings and developing partnerships with developers for historic preservation, and the one thing that kind of caught my attention is that this ordinance puts any developer on notice that the project is not necessarily supported by the city of Guthrie. I talked with a staff person. The National Trust has a for-profit subsidiary that we provide, well, I'm off board now as of October, but they provide New Markets Tax Credits and Historic Tax Credits for significant projects. I talked to one of the staff members last week. We have a separate set aside under the New Markets Tax Credit, and this group considers a $2 million project extremely small, extremely small. But they set aside some bit of their tax credits, New Markets Tax Credits, to focus on Main Street projects. So 2 million around is probably the minimum that they would do. You know what he asked me? How does the city feel about it? And I said, "Preservation hasn't been a top priority, as I've seen it through the years of the city of Guthrie." And he said, "We would not want to come into a community that we didn't have full, total support from the city government. If this resolution is passed, you're not stopping the potential for restoring and rehabbing these buildings, but you are definitely putting a speed bump in the way by declaring that the city of Guthrie does not have faith in the restoration proposed." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie.
I have one question.
Question, Ms. Guthrie.
On the New Market Tax Credits, is there a special provision for historic districts? Because that's not in a census tract eligible for New Market Tax Credits.
It is in the census, it provides right there at Oklahoma, and I had a staff person for New Markets.
Can you get right on the microphone? Thank you.
I had the staff person for New Markets to clarify that it is in the New Markets District, barely, but it is.
Okay.
And of course, it qualifies for Historic Tax Credits, both federal and state.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
You said there would be a speed bump for the restoration project proposed. What restoration project proposed are you talking about?
Well, there are a group of people currently that are trying to organize the redevelopment, and, no, they don't have someone to sign personally on the bottom line, the note, but when you're developing a raw piece of ground, that is one way to look at a redevelopment. You hire an architect, engineers, concepts, you know, 30, 60, 90 days maybe to get the plans and take the bids. But with the restoration project, the state and federal government has recognized that it is expensive. It is beyond typically what the market value is, return on investment, and so state and federal government has determined we need to subsidize those historic preservation projects. And that is, you know, state and federal laws that have been maintained to encourage projects like this that are not, they're not impossible, but they are extremely difficult. And the reason I say that it's a speed bump is because you are putting out there notice to any potential developer, any potential financier, that at any moment, the city of Guthrie could go, time's up. And it also sends a message that the city of Guthrie does not support historic preservation in a landmark historic district. It needs time, gentlemen. It just needs time. And I understand, if I were sitting there, I'm sure that you'd get calls daily, but we have identified a funding source that will clean up and stabilize in the interim the property. There is a funding source in place, as I understand it.
And that is the National Trust that you're talking about, or is this a different funding source?
This is an individual has stepped forward, willing to cover the cost to stabilize, which, you know, as preservationists, we don't want to see it, you know, blown over either. We would like to see it stabilized and cleaned up. You know, there's no doubt that it's an eyesore, but it's been less than 120 days, and these kinds of actions don't happen overnight. If preservation were easy, everybody would be doing it. It's not.
Can you share the scope of your word cleanup?
The cleanup would be to shore up the exterior walls. There has been, there have been multiple bids suggested or cost estimates put forward. You know, you could put in braces every 12 inches, or you could put in braces every five feet or 10 feet, whatever. Ask a different structural engineer as to what is required, but it would be the minimum required to stabilize the facade, the exterior walls that are still there and still intact and contributing to the district. The debris that fell down in and of itself is a problem, but in order to get someone in there to clean out the debris, you've got to stabilize the walls first.
This person willing to pay for that, have they even spoke to the property owners?
Yes, they are.
So they're in agreement with the property, or the property owners in agreement to let them do it?
Well, I can't speak for Byron and Betty, but I will say that I met with them, and Byron and Betty are financially and emotionally devastated by what happened. You know, if you had a 401K and you were Byron Burrline, it would be in your instruments and your sheet music and your artifacts. They're all gone. No offense, Byron, I'm in my 70s almost, but, you know, if you're 75 or 74 years old, you don't want to, you don't want to take on an easy redevelopment project, you know, build a new house even. And this project is not easy. Most historic preservation projects are not easy. This one is extremely difficult, but it has been done in the past, and it can be done here with support.
Thank you very much for those comments.
Thank you.
Ms. Guthrie. Abigail Ropp.
Hello. Do I need to state my address?
Yes.
Okay. Abigail Ropp. I live at 910 East Cleveland Avenue, and here in Guthrie, we've been here since October of 2016. My comments are, I would want to make sure, first of all, the fact that we have to have a meeting like this is devastating, because if anyone in this room could go back in time and make this not happen, every one of us would do that. I think that there's not a single soul in this room that wants to see Guthrie fail at all. And so my biggest point that I would like to make is that if there have been precedents set in the past, that yes, we do have ordinances, but maybe they were not followed because of whatever the case may be, I'd like to make sure that the timelines that are considered are that, that would be very feasible and be able to be accomplished. Obviously, 30 days is not going to work. And to see a project go through like this after owning the depot for over a year, you're at the mercy of equipment not coming in on time, you're at the mercy of rain and all kinds of weather, so that when the city council considers dates, I would ask that if this was your building and you had the intention of restoring it, that you would definitely keep that in consideration to know that the timeline given is completely doable, if not able to be appealed as information comes in on the project, that when it's being restored, as long as the group in charge of restoring it communicates, lets you know how things are going, you know, gives you status report updates, so that then you can talk to the individuals in Guthrie, who I know are blowing up your phones, and asking you when this is going to get cleaned up, that you have solid answers that you can actually give them. Because at the end of the day, we want to make sure that our downtown district is preserved and that we don't have a big eyesore for people to look at. So my comments would just be, please take a look at maybe prior projects that have been restored and the timelines that it's taken, and maybe use that as a guide, as long as the groups that are involved in rehabilitation provide you ample information.
As you talk to people and with your own personal experience, what would you consider a reasonable timeframe?
Are you talking about shoring up the building, or are you talking about full restoration?
Restoration.
Full restoration? We have a building that we personally have been working on for a year. I don't know how many people would consider it fully restored. We know that we have a second phase. As far as full restoration goes, really, you're looking at a year to two years, depending on the scope of the project. If you're talking about something elaborate, obviously, that timeline would take longer. My main concern now is getting it publicly safe, shored up, and that the debris is cleaned out, so that when we do go and have people come in, because there are property owners who are coming in looking at the buildings, interested in purchasing it, they're able to see past the rubble. If James Long took somebody into a house that was full of debris, it'd be difficult to look past that mess and see the value. So we'd like to at least know that we have the time to shore it up and get it cleaned out, so that we don't have to worry about safety at this point.
Okay, all right.
I have a question. Would it be reasonable to have a series of steps in the timeline? One would be a timeline for stabilization of the structure, and then a follow-up lighter timeline to remove the debris, and then a timeline to document that the funding had been secured, and then one much further out for the actual restoration, so it could be done in steps?
I think that when you take a project on like this, I look at it as a city has kind of a banking relationship with it, that they're going to want to see that an individual who's coming to purchase a building has tax papers, has all the proof that says, hey, I'm not going to go into bankruptcy. I have all of my i's dotted and t's crossed with my w2's that you need to see. So I think that at a certain extent, yes, you guys should be able to ask for timelines, but at the same time, I think that there needs to be understanding that if a timeline is getting close and there's massive rain and concrete can't be poured, that we can then go and submit a extension request to get work done that's clearly going to be happening. As long as there's forward movement and there's communication, I feel like a timeline should be able to be appealed to be extended.
And we have done that with residential structures we've condemned. They've been given extensions as long as they have documented and provided steps that they are making progress.
I don't, I mean, I can't speak for anyone else here, but for me, if you came to me and said, Abby, I need to see these things, I don't think that that's a ridiculous request at all. I think that's completely fair, as long as we can just submit what we need to submit and have those timelines be believable.
I don't think anybody here...
Close to the mic.
I thought it was. I said, I don't think anybody here would be detrimental to any progress being I said, I don't think anybody here would be detrimental to any progress being made. But this hearing is happening, we've seen zero proposals, zero anything from anybody. I mean, you know, I keep hearing, we stabilize, we this, we that, but who is we and where are they in, you know, that's the, we can't go, we're gonna, but there's nobody here saying, we're doing it. So that's the, that's kind of why we have to do this meeting, because there is no proposal, there's nobody doing anything.
Well, to let you know some of the backwork that's happened, we've had different companies come in and submit bids that tell us exactly the dollar amount that it's going to cost to shore up the buildings and also clean them out. And the dollar figure is way less than anyone could possibly anticipate. And I want to make sure that the individual who is going to be able to, who is offered to pay for that has the flexibility in choosing the bid that they want to go with. But at the same time, it's a company, and if I incorrect in my information, that is very well-known in Guthrie, that would be doing the shoring up, they have Guthrie ties, they have absolutely the heart that says they don't want to see a crummy job happen. You know, they're not just a contractor that's going to try to flip it quick and go. And so as far as a proposal, it has come to our attention within the last 48 hours that we have solidified a person to donate the money to fix it. So as far as a plan goes, we can definitely put one together, should the city council allow that to happen. I'd be interested in that timeline for the plan to be constructed, submitted, and discussed. And that way, we can give you numbers, dates, all of that, and be honest and transparent and show you what the plan is, so that you guys are all aware of it, and you can also, again, let people know what's going on.
I don't think any of us want to kick progress, so to speak. It's just, you have to start somewhere, and so far, nothing's happened.
Well, not only has nothing happened, but the city is the one currently paying for the fencing. And so that's really the responsibility of the property owner, and the property owner has not shown any interest that wants to restore the buildings or put any money toward that. And so as I do not want to see those facades lost, I really don't, but I also believe that the property owner and whomever organization that he's getting with needs to get those invoices paid, so that the city is out of it. The city has no business being part of it. It needs, it is private property currently, it should remain private property, done with private money.
Ms. Ropp, is the group that you're speaking about the same as what Ms. Guthrie spoke about earlier? Is it one and the same, or are there two separate groups that are...
No, it's one and the same.
One and the same?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
One and the same.
Any other questions from the council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address, and I'll remind you, you have five minutes.
Really?
Really, Carol.
Can we check with the city attorney if we want to hear information? We want to hear everything we want to know?
Just start. Go ahead.
Okay, well, on record. Can't read my notes. Okay. Carol Hersel, 3119 Cedar Ridge Court. My husband Jeff couldn't be here, but every week since the fire, we have been gathering information, we have talked to many people for proposals for the Berlin building. Jeff is in Lions Club with Byron, and they have stayed in touch every week. We have different proposals from a preservation architect. At first, it was a $2.5 million to restore two buildings, but we quickly realized that is not feasible. There is a music venue in Oklahoma City, which it's in a historic building, it has very tall ceilings, one level. So instead of Byron's building that had three different levels, lots of expense, this would be one tall ceiling, brick walls that are already there, and a concrete floor. This venue in Oklahoma City has a big stage, it has hinges, and they put their tables and chairs underneath the, underneath the stage. So you could have a dance hall, or if you need to bring the tables and chairs out, you can do that also. Now, this is just an idea, but we've talked to bankers that are familiar with this venue in Oklahoma City, and they say, that venue is doing great. This banker used to live in Guthrie and said, I think it's ideal for a music venue in Guthrie because we have theater, we have music, why not Guthrie be theater and music? And my husband talked to Logan County Economic Development last week, and they said, absolutely, we'd give loans, and we'd have better loan rates than the banks, and they have extended terms. So we have financing, we have architects, we have proposals for developers, and every single week, we've done that. We've been in contact with the National Trust, with Susan, who's been in contact with the National Trust, and... So I don't know, is there anything that we haven't done? And do you want to talk about the email I sent you?
I shared that with the city council.
So all the city council keeps saying they don't know anything. That's what I'm confused. I sent information about our past histories. Do you want to go over that?
I think the email you sent is similar to what's being said tonight, but again, the details of whose financing, timelines, that kind of stuff was not in that email.
It was SOD Foundation and Logan County Historical Society. Both have a record of the Rock Island Depot, SOD Foundation did that. And the way we did that, we asked people to put money up. Sonic put money up. It used to be a spray painted building, spray painted silver. It had a bad roof. We took the silver off, we replaced the roof, and then, at some point, somebody sold, bought it. But we can't predict a timeline when you do some improvements and people say, oh, I get it, you know, I want to do, you know, do further, because we do, we have a group that is willing to stabilize it and remove the debris. You have to brace it first, and I believe, did you talk to the contractor this morning, today?
I've not had any communications from anybody today.
Diversified?
They didn't indicate that...
Brad Latham told me he talked to you. That's why I'm confused, why there's not information out there. If, we want to clarify?
The only thing he asked me is if he could attend the meeting tonight, since he was a resident from another community, is all that he communicated, and I said, yes, you could. So that's the extent of our phone call conversation today.
Okay, well, is it clear now, we have money to do the bracing and the debris cleanup?
We've heard that there is an individual who is willing to step forward and do that.
And that's us. We're spearheading that. Jeff and Carol Hersel are spearheading it, and we're ready to go.
For the stabilization.
And the cleanup.
And cleanup, correct.
And the owner is willing to let you do that? Do you have an agreement with the owners?
Okay.
I see them sitting there, I asked you the question.
The record reflect that Byron Berlin said yes, the answer to that question, is that correct, Byron?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right. Carol, anything else?
Well, does anybody else say that, I mean, you feel like you're up to date now with what we've been doing for many, many conversations and much work? Does anybody think we haven't done something that we should be doing?
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Hersel. Since it is a public hearing, I'll ask if there's anybody else that would like to make any comment. To just identify yourself and follow the same process that has been followed by the three previous speakers. Byron, you want to come forward, please? Identify yourself, address.
Byron Berlin, 1010 East Noble, Guthrie, Oklahoma. Well, you know how I feel. I want this building to stay as it is, I mean, be resurrected if at all possible. Betty and I can't afford to do it. And we want to keep going, that's why we bought another building, straight east, you know, of that. But I would hate to see it demolished, but if that's what it has to be, but that's what it would be. But I really appreciate these folks' concern and want to preserve that building and to be able to put the money into it. And as far as the timeline, I mean, I hope you will work with us on that, you know, as far as getting things rolling. We don't want to wait forever, for sure, that's, we know that. But a decent timeline would be great, if you could see to do that for us. But I really, and whatever they do with the building, and like you mentioned, an entertainment-type building, I think it would be wonderful, you know, because that's my business, is entertainment. So I think it would be great. But I just appreciate all the interest in the building and wanting to preserve it, and since it is a historical building.
Any questions? So you have had dialogue then with this working group?
Yes.
Periodically?
Yeah, Jeff Hersel's kept me, you know, different people interested and stuff. He hasn't given me any names, as far as that goes. Well, he did give me a name, but, you know, but I know that's what they're working on, trying to shore up the facade and make sure that's structurally sound before they go and do the debris. So I think once that's done, I think you'd all be happy if that happened. I know I am.
How long will it take for some of this shoring up would start?
Well, I don't, I don't know. I'm not the one that...
I'm asking you because you're the owner. I think they're going to have to give you permission, or you're going to have to give them permission to do it.
Yes.
So you don't know?
We don't know exactly, I don't know exactly the date right now.
Have you received the invoices from the city in regards to the current temporary fencing?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Are there any intentions to get that paid?
Well, we'll see what happens. You know, I'm not going to say right, yeah, I'm sure there is, you know, eventually.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin. The city is not an adversary in this. The city wants things to be moving forward. And we want, we want our historic area to continue to be an historic part of our community. It's a part of our foundation, it's a part of our, it's part of the bones of who we are. But having said that, the first picture that was up there on the burned-out two buildings, we also have a responsibility, a responsibility to the community, a responsibility to safety, a responsibility to move forward. So please don't interpret this resolution as one of being an adversarial, but we do have to make steps forward. And I think some of the dialogue that's happened in the last half an hour kind of reflects some potentially good steps. Any other community comments, Ms. Guthrie? You can certainly come, have up there. Maybe you can shed a little bit more specifics than what you, that have come up since you made your first presentation.
Thank you.
And you don't have to identify yourself and your address this time.
Isn't it great to be named Guthrie? You know, what I said was the speed bump. If you would give this resolution 30 days of simmer time before you make public the fact that the city is on the path to forcing demolition or forcing something to happen, if you would give it 30 days to simmer, I think that you can get a firm bid and a firm commitment for the stabilization and then debris removal. But stabilization has to happen first. Don't want anybody being hit by falling bricks.
Absolutely.
So that's, that's all I'm asking, is that, you know, simmer it for 30 days and force the budget to come back.
Any other questions by council?
Not a question, I just think that I would love to see this restored. I don't see a problem giving 30 days, but I also would expect in that 30 days that that current outstanding invoice for fencing be paid for by private dollars and the city no longer floating that.
I'll pay it.
That's great. I just think, I think it's unfair to put that on the piggyback of the city.
That was, that was a statement by Ms. Hersel, I believe, saying that she would pay the fencing.
It's the principle, Carol, it really is.
Okay. Well, if there's no other public comment, then we will move on to the item number four, which is the actual discussion and proposed action to approve Resolution 2019-19, which is declaring these two properties, 117, 121, East Oklahoma, and taking action as identified in the resolution that was before the, for the council. Any additional comments?
No, sir.
That was Resolution 2019, 2019-11.
11.
Yeah.
No other comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
I'd actually like to just...
Can we table it?
I'd like to table it and give them the 30 days they're asking for, because that's given us, that's the motion we're looking for, is that someone's committed to do something, and if they can do it within 30 days, then maybe we'll know where we're at. And that's what they're asking for, that's what we were wanting to do, is to see what's going on. And I think we've achieved our goal by giving them 30 days to do that.
Other comments? Other comments?
No, sir.
Okay, there hasn't been a motion...
A motion to table for 30 days.
Oh, there is.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to table Resolution 2019-11 for 30 days for additional information and progress. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes, friend.
See the votes. Ladies and gentlemen, you have 30 days. Remove that speed bump. Item number five, discussion possible action to award bid number 2019-04, demolition and site clearance of a number of buildings, residences at 219 West Lincoln, 310 South Elm, 912 West Mansour, 1108 West Mansour. Staff?
I've got a short presentation on the status of the structures that were declared dangerous and dilapidated in Resolution 2019-6. Tonight, we're going to ask to award six bids on, out of the 10 properties, award six of the bids to the lowest bidding contractor. The four that are not, the four that would not be awarded would still be declared as dangerous and dilapidated until the projects are complete or the money's available for the clearing of the sites. This is 219 West Lincoln, with no progress being made. The lowest bidder on this was K&amp;M at $4,397. This is 310 South Elm, no progress has been made. The lowest bid on this was also K&amp;M Wrecking at $8,532. 912 West Mansour, no progress has been made here. K&amp;M Wrecking bid this at $3,805. 1108 West Mansour, no progress on this one as well. $3,936 was bid by K&amp;M Wrecking. 505 East Harrison, there's been no progress made to date. I was contacted by the family on this one, and I believe that Philip is here...
Yes, yes.
...to talk about this property. I will say that on 89ers, during the 89ers celebration, after that was over, I was contacted by the family, that somebody had noticed that the house had been posted. And at that time, we told them about the, that we would require plans of restoration, they'd have to acquire permits, and we'd want a timeline as to, as for the restoration to move forward. And they did come into the office last Thursday to try and obtain permits, and we didn't want to issue those with the awarding scheduled for this council meeting. So with that, I'll... So with that, I'll, I'll let Mr. Muse speak for a second.
Have you completed all, all your presentations?
I have not. Would you like me to finish the rest of them and then let him?
Why don't you finish the rest of them and?
Uh, this is 511 North 10th Street. No progress has been made. Midwest Wrecking bid, whoop, sorry. Midwest Wrecking bid the last property at $5,230. Uh, this is 1024 West Washington.
And my point out, this point forward are not being proposed for this contract award. The ones that you've seen previously are proposed to be awarded contracts tonight for demolition.
Yes, this, this is 1024 West Washington. There has been some progress made on the property. The property owner stated that they should be able to be finished within two months, and we are not asking for this one to be awarded this evening. Something happened here with the laptop. I think it just, it's kind of down on the screen.
See, this is the lady that came to the last meeting. See, this was the lady that came to the last meeting, 1024 West Washington.
Okay. Last meeting?
Yeah, and we were discussing that.
Yeah, we never know. Let us not be, follow the board.
No, I understand that, but this was the lady.
Yeah, you're right.
The next property is 709 South Capital. The family for this property step, came forward. They have submitted an application for a demo permit. They've done quite a bit of work clearing the trees out around the house in preparation of demo of the house. As soon as we have all the releases from the utility companies, we would issue them the permit and, and let them proceed forward with doing the demolition and removal on, on their own. This is 1010 and 1010 and a half North 13th Street. We have not issued any permits on this house yet. The ownership did change hands on this property the night of resolution 2019-6. He has hauled off a lot of loads of material and in preparation for restoration. He has been moving forward. We'd like to give him a little more time to see if he can keep moving forward with the restoration of this property. And this is the final house this evening, 1005 East College. It also recently changed hands to an investor. Permits were just issued on this June 10th, and he submitted a timeline for his work, the plans, and it already has a new roof on it, and they've got the house cleaned up for renovation.
Okay. Can you, can you move back to the 505 East Harrison then?
Absolutely.
For Mr. Muse? Speaks? Okay. Mr. Muse? Identify yourself and your address, please.
My name is Philip Muse, and my address is in Lawton, Oklahoma. 1310 Southwest Jefferson in Lawton, Oklahoma. I'm a former resident of this community. I grew up here. Played sports here, went to school here, went to, graduated from Langston University. I'm currently a teacher in Lawton. And I have a letter from my sister. She and I are, have taken on this project for the family since my dad passed in 2017. And I know it would be his desire to restore it because that's what he wanted to do, but she outlines it in her letter. She asked me if I would read it, but I don't know if I'll have time and to say what I want to, but I have a copy for everyone that if you want to read.
Okay.
My father's Luke Muse. He was a pastor. He lived in this community for 60 years. It says that in the letter. He lived in that home since 1980 when he purchased it. It was paid for. He moved to Oklahoma City with his spouse, and he lived there for another 18 years. It was his desire to come back. He pastored in Langston University, so we would, and I would come once a month to go to church with him. So I kept in close contact with him. I'm probably, of all my siblings, the closest to him. About the house, if you look at it, it looks bad there on the front. And, and it is. The roof is, it has wood shingle on top plus shingles on it. And I have a brother and I, we, we came to, to put up, to get a permission to start working. But when I came here in April for 89ers time, I did not know that the house was up for demolition until I saw the notice on the house. And so I began to contact my other siblings. And we tried to put together quickly a plan to try to, to do something, and they gave us 30 days. But as you know, as a school teacher, I, my time is limited, so I couldn't get out of school until May and, and devote full time to doing it, but I, I have the summer now. And so I'm here, and I'm trying to put all the time and effort I can into it to, to shore the roof up. We had one setback. There was a big mature tree that fell on a truck in the back. And in order to get anything in and out of the back, we had to first cut the tree up. And that is a task, so, and then the truck is back there, and I have somebody that's was supposed to come today or tomorrow to pull the truck out, but he couldn't because of the tree. But we did get the tree and, and some of the debris. And it's gonna take a lot of physical work, but that's what we want to do. And we want to dry it up and weatherproof it. We spent last summer taking out all the debris in the house, furniture and trash and, and things that were in the house, and got that disposed of. But we just need more time.
So what happens in August when school starts again?
In August when school starts, I have other brothers that, that are gonna take on. I'm, I'm putting my best effort in, and I'll come every weekend if I have to, and any, any time that I have available. But when school starts in August, it just starts. My brother, I have a brother that lives in Oklahoma City, and he does a lot of the yard work for us, and he can handle the roof part. I have a contractor. His name is Fred Bautier. He's, he's an electrician. He can do the electric part. I have a, another contractor that does cabinet work, and, and he has agreed to, to help with that. Another contractor who is, he does concrete, and he is going to make sure the foundation is sure.
Major structural thing, issues are the roof.
The roof, and.
And you said the concrete and foundation?
Roof has a couple of holes, and because of the holes and the rain and the, the, the part of the foundation at the bottom has maybe separated a little bit on one corner. And across the back, there's some things that need to be shored up, but I think digging some holes and pouring some concrete will shore those up.
So have you given any kind of timeline to, to the city staff at all in which these things can be accomplished?
We attempted to, but we're asking for at least six months to make a, make a good showing, so that we can move forward. What I would like to see is that, if you look at it, the front of it, if you look at this house from the front, paint in the roof and, and kind of fixing the, the, some of the trusses at the top, which have deteriorated just on the edges, that will make the, the curb appeal a lot better.
Do you have a cost analysis on what it's gonna cost you to restore this house?
Uh, not fully, no, not yet. We haven't, we just hadn't had a lot of time to do all of that.
What's the intent once you get it restored? Is it to sell it? Is it to live there?
Oh, no. We want to keep the property. And my wife and I, when we, we want to eventually move here and to live there, because we're, our children, we're, we're empty nesters. My wife's mom lives with us, and her home is in Wichita, Kansas, and Guthrie is a lot closer than Lawton. And we'd like to get her closer to the rest of the family.
So without these notices, would we have continued to just look at it the way it is today? Is it because of the notices that now we're trying to fix it?
Oh, no. We, we, we have been taking care of the yard. We've been making plans. We just, this accelerates it. And it's gonna cost money, and we just, you know, and we didn't know it was about to be demolished. And so we thought we had more time, so that's why we were taking more time.
Any other questions from Mr. Muse? All right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments from staff?
No.
No? Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion then to move forward with bid number 2019-04, which includes all those properties, unless I hear differently.
I would amend the motion to exclude this one property that he wants more time for and then grant him some time.
You have a suggested time?
I do not. That'd be up for discussion.
Staff?
If we were allowed to issue permits for this property, they are good for six months.
We get more money for this what month? What's our budget month?
October 1.
Start, beginning of fiscal year is October 1?
My recommendation would be to, if you take it off this agenda, give them three months to show substantial progress, since he will be here all summer. And then if he makes substantial progress, to give a second extension for additional three months to finish it.
That sounds reasonable.
That sounds fair. Okay, I'll entertain a motion then to move forward with bid number 2019-04, with the exception of the property at 505 East Harrison, giving them a three-month timeframe to make significant progress. And if progress has been made, then an additional three months to complete renovation.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes, Fran.
See the votes. Unanimous approval from the council present to move forward with bid number 2019-04 with the amendment as identified for property on 505 East Harrison. That takes us to item number six, discussion possible action to confirm mayor's nomination of John Belsinger for the second three-year term for the Guthrie Regional Airport Advisory Board. Shalon, do you want to make any comment?
I would just like to say that the joint agreement is looked upon favorably by the FAA, Federal Aviation Administration.
Excuse me, we're, we're still at the nomination. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry.
I didn't make that clear.
That was the next one.
Do you want, do you want to make any comment concerning that nomination?
Well, the last meeting, the Airport Advisory Board voted unanimously to vote for John Belsinger to a second three-year term.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and a second. Any other discussion concerning that nomination? Submit your votes, please, please.
All votes, Fran.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to approve John Belsinger for another second three-year term for the Guthrie Edmond Regional Airport. Stay right there. Item number seven, possible action to renew the existing Guthrie Edmond Airport Agreement for a five-year term. Now you can talk about that. Shalon?
As I was saying, the joint agreement is looked upon favorably by the FAA and the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission. It has always been a benefit to the airport in the development and the growth. So we encourage you to continue this agreement. The neat thing about it is that the reimbursable agreement is where each city pays 50% of the operating and capital improvement projects at the airport. So it is a huge benefit to the city of Guthrie.
Okay. Any questions from council? All right. Thank you. I'll entertain then a motion to.
A motion.
Have a motion and a, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to move forward for another five years with the Guthrie Edmond Airport Agreement. Submit your votes, please.
All votes, Fran.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to move forward from July 1st, 2019, to June 30th, 2024, with the Guthrie Edmond Airport Agreement. Item number eight, discussion possible action to approve resolution 2019-12 to establish a 911 emergency telephone fee increase for the calendar year 2020. Staff comments?
We work with ACOG in a regional group for the 911, and this is the recommended amount. And so each year, we adopt this resolution to confirm that, so it will be collected. And in the near future, you'll have another resolution that will allow that money to go to ACOG as part of the operations of the 911, but that will come later.
Okay. All right. Any questions from council? Okay, I'll entertain a motion then to move forward with resolution 2019-12, which establishes the 911 fee for calendar year 2020.
So moved.
Have a motion or a second? Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes, Fran.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to move forward with the resolution 2019-12, establishing the 911 rates for calendar year 2020. Item number nine, discussion possible action regarding ambulance fees, accounts receivable, et cetera, et cetera, that were identified in the 2018 audit. Staff comments?
This is too large to put on a PowerPoint, but we're gonna pull it up, and hopefully I can maneuver around the spreadsheet for the benefit of viewing audience, but I have the spreadsheet printed out for the council members, and there's two separate reports that I'll be going over.
Several sets. Just take one? Yep.
I want the other spreadsheet first. We've been using Intermex ambulance billing since 2007, if I remember correctly. This particular report that they were able to generate goes back to 2012. There is other reports that we could get data further back, but I think this will work for our discussion purposes. And will I be able to control it from here now?
Libra, you want me to dim the lights?
Yes, ma'am.
So this starts at 2012 in February of 2013, I'm sorry. So that first year in green is a parcel year, but if we. green is a parcel year, but if we go across, um, the first column, of course, is the month, and remember, our budget year starts in October, so that's why it starts with the 10th month of each year, because that's, uh, uh, the first month of, of that given budget year, so we're gonna look at this on a budget year sequence. Um, the second column, uh, begins with the beginning accounts receivable, so in February of 2013, if you look at that, uh, there's $3,332,528 that was the beginning accounts receivable. These numbers won't match up exactly with the audit, because, um, prior to 2007, um, there was the accounts receivable when we used to do our own billing, so there will be some difference, but again, I think this will explain the process and, and give you a, a good idea of, of where we're at and how the process works. Uh, the next column over, billed charges, that's the ambulance charges billed each month, so you can see that for the parcel year of FY 2013, the billing was $1,142,491. The next one over is payments received, and remember, this is a moving target, because payments are not all received in one month, they're received over a period of time, you know, insurance doesn't pay in 30 days, uh, boot, um, Medicaid, Medicare, so it's a several month process, so those numbers, uh, but this is far enough back, those should be firm numbers, but when we get to, like, the 2018, 2019, there may be some insurance payments still looming out there. Um, but the billing charges each month, as you move forward for each year, the sequence still stays the same, uh, and then the payments is what we received in payments. The adjustment column, which is next over, and, uh, you'll see that there was $51,003 adjusted in 2013 in February, and for that parcel year, the adjustments was $450,333.87. Those adjustments are Medicaid, Medicare, um, that's set by the government, we don't dictate that, so we have to accept if we want to participate and get paid their reimbursement rate. Uh, there are some large insurance companies like Blue Cross Blue Shield that also are big enough that they can dictate their reimbursement rate, so that adjustment is a portion of the bill that is written off because of the schedules of those type of entities, Medicare, Medicaid, so forth. Um, so those are uncollectible. And if you notice on, back on the payments, uh, for that parcel year in, uh, FY 2013, out of the amount billed, we collect at 27%, just under 27%. 40% was written off because of, uh, the reimbursement rate schedule of Medicaid, Medicare, and some of the insurance companies that we deal with. The next column is write-offs or accounts closed, and you can see for that parcel of a year, there was $10,033.87. The Intermex is obligated to at least try for 120 days on collection. Normally, they try for a, a 12-month period. Uh, they are not a collection agency, they are a billing service, uh, to process our bills. When we get done, that may be something we want to look at, is for the bills that aren't paid, um, do we want to retain a collection agency to pursue those? But Intermex is our billing service, while they try to collect it through the normal process, they are not per se a collection agency. Then the refunds are just adjustments, if something, something gets overpaid or underpaid, uh, there are some adjustments. Then you see the last column is accounts receivable balance, uh, and, uh, started the year at 3.3 million, if you go all the way back to the right-hand column, ended the year with 3.7 million, so the accounts receivable grew $376,000 in that parcel year. Then, to not intermingle these, because it wouldn't, uh, flow with the, the spreadsheet, past the gray column, I've inserted the Intermex fee, um, on, uh, the amount that we pay them to do the billing for us and processing our claims. Um, the, then I did a net revenue, uh, so if you take the payments that we received and then subtract off what we pay Intermex for the billing process, that's the net revenue, and I, I failed to calculate it on the parcel year, but if you look down the blue, you'll see that, uh, Intermex, their billing was 11% of what we, what we got paid. There, it's a percentage of what we get paid, not what we bill. I would point out that, in addition to providing the processing and billing service, they also provide, uh, for lack of a better term, iPads that we use in the ambulance service to document all this stuff, and they provide those and maintain those, and that's part of what we pay them for in addition to the billing, so it's more than just the billing. And then the net, uh, revenue, if you look in, uh, the 2014 year, was 23%. So if you go across and, and go down, and if you look at, uh, in the blue, 2014, um, our billing was one, almost $2 million. We collect at $530,000 in payments, 27%. Again, uh, roughly 40% is, uh, subtracted off because of the adjustments for Medicaid, Medicare, based on billing, uh, reimbursement. Um, and then you'll notice an outlier in, uh, September of 2014, write-offs, $2 million, and that was the process where city staff, uh, went through, uh, the outstanding accounts with Intermex, and wrote off a series of bills that would determine that were uncollectible, uh, because of the age of the accounts and the prior, uh, unsuccessful, um, avenues to collect it. Again, uh, um, I show you what we paid Intermex, and, um, when you subtract that off, you get about 24% of what you bill in that revenue. Uh, running an ambulance service is not a real lucrative business, as you can see, and the, uh, yellow tent or, um, tan, uh, is 2015. Again, you can see, uh, almost $3 million in billing. We collect at $667,000, or 22%, and on across, you can see write-offs, uh, or adjustments for, uh, the reimbursement rate is again 46%, um, and on across, um, the same information. If you flip the sheet over... The first one, uh, when you flip it over, is, uh, budget year FY 2016. Again, uh, not to go clear across, but, uh, our billing was $3 million, and the payments we received was $735,000, uh, or 24%. Uh, if you come on down in FY 17, uh, our billing was 3.2, uh, payments received was $744,000, or 23%, and then in FY 2018, um, billing was three, just under 3.4, and reimbursement, or what we got paid was, or collected was $736,000, or 21%. Um, if you go down on totals, you see that, uh, our average during this time period of our billing, we collected roughly 23.5%. Um, Medicaid, Medicare reimbursement, the adjustments, the write-offs for that was about 47%. Uh, and you see the, uh, accounts closed, the write-off during this time period was 4.8 million, that's uncollectible, and I tried to, on the right-hand side, if you look at the accounts receivable balance, uh, by the reports from Intermex, is $3,183,253. That's down below in red, and the way our accountants do it, and our auditors, is they, they say the state constitution doesn't allow us to write off any debt owed to the city, even if it goes back to 1889, it's still supposed to be on the books. Uh, so, that $4,876 that's deemed uncollectible and written off through our billing service, the accountants and our auditors add that back in. So, um, I know the audit report shows 9.2 million of accounts receivable, uh, this report shows 8 million, but there's, there's some write-offs between '07 and '12 that's not on this report, so it's not captured, so that's why there's some difference. But that 8 million is the adjusted accounts receivable balance that's used by the auditors, and then the auditors write off 98% of that accounts receivable as being uncollectible, and so if you think back to the audit report that you questioned, uh, the accounts receivable were $9,254, they showed allowance for uncollectibles of $9,690,000, and a net, uh, net accounts receivable, $185,000. Here, uh, this would adjust out to, um, if you take 98%, uh, and they say that's based on the history of our collections, uh, 7.9 would be considered uncollectible, and, uh, $161,000 would be considered, or 2% of it would be collectible. I've got a second report that might help, um, explain some of this before we entertain questions. On this report compares us to some other communities that are served by Intermex, uh, so there's nine different clients on here, uh, and Guthrie is identified, but it doesn't name the other, uh, clients, and Guthrie goes across in the light blue line. Um, and I have ranked these, if you look at collections, uh, I thought that was most pertinent to our discussions. I, I took the column for collections and ranked it from highest to lowest. The other columns will be mixed as a result of that. Uh, but if you look at, um, as you go across, and this is for 2017 and 2018, this is on a calendar year, not budget year, so it, you won't be able to directly compare this to the other report, but it shows billing incidents or runs. Uh, we had, uh, in calendar year 2017, 1,922 billable incidents. Uh, the largest one was client six, it had 3,924, um, more than, twice what we did, and again, in 2018, ours was 1905, and the largest one, again, was client six, which had over 4,000. Um, the next column shows the average charge, uh, and then the gross charge, of course, would be for the whole year. Uh, adjustments, again, that is what you take off because of the Medicaid, Medicare, um, reimbursement schedule. Um, so if you look at, um, there is a large grouping at 50% in, roughly in 17 and 18, um, and there's three that are lower write-offs, and that's partly due to factors like rural versus urban, because Medicaid, Medicare have different reimbursement rates. For example, if we were further away, we'd be classified, uh, differently on the amount we get reimbursed per mile driven, uh, but we're close enough, we get the lower one. Uh, so, some of that difference is explained by location, and I don't have the location of all these to go into that. Collections is the next column over, and you can see collections, uh, um, in 2017, our collections was about 22% of what we billed, and it was about 21% in, uh, 2018. Again, you see there is a cluster of, um, entities that's right in that 20% range, similar to what our collections are, and then you got the three outliers that, again, because they have less adjustments, they're gonna have higher collections, because they're not writing off as much, because they get a higher Medicaid, Medicare reimbursement. Um, and then the write-offs, uh, you can see where our, our write-offs are and balance due. Um, the further right-hand side, um, and I think something that's a factor for us on the amount of write-offs is if you look at the self-pay, which is the furthest right-hand column, we have the highest percentage of self-pay, which is typically uninsured, so that's gonna lead to, uh, more unpaid bills when you're dealing with individuals that don't have healthcare insurance. Uh, so that plays into our collections. Um, but our mix of patients that we serve with the ambulance, 51% are paid by Medicare, 12% Medicaid, 13% commercial, and 22% are self-paid, and you can see the mix of the patient mix for the other ambulance services on the sheet as well, they're, they're laid out there. So, um, that's kind of a rundown of how those numbers came about in the audit, and, um, Eric and Kim helped me put this report together, um, and they're here tonight, um, and we will try to address questions that you have.
Questions by the council, please.
So obviously, we're not collecting between 76% to 80% of what we bill.
Correct.
So what is the actual cost associated with that? Obviously, there's a difference between billing and actually cost associated with the service. Do we have any idea of how those two correlate?
We will, um, get into that more when we go through the budget process, and you will be able to see, um, how much money it takes us to run the ambulance service. It is somewhat difficult to split out the ambulance service... It is somewhat difficult to split out the ambulance service, because firefighter/ambulance driver is the same guy, depending on what the call of duty is that day, but we try to break it out. But clearly, when you take what we make on billing for the ambulance runs, and roughly $350,000 we get from the three mills that, by signing a contract with the EMS district that covers the Guthrie School area, our ambulance service does not break even. It is subsidized by the general fund. If you were to say, "Let's run Guthrie like a business," well, this would be something you look at and say, "That's something that doesn't even break even, why are we doing that?" But then you also have to look at, from a service standpoint, because City Guthrie is not a business, but we try to run with as many business principles as we can. We're a service organization. And if we got out of the ambulance service, we would have to consider what level of service would fill in if we weren't there. And so you have to weigh that balance. But we'll get into those discussions more as we go through the budget process, and you can see the cost to operate the ambulance service and the revenue stream that goes to pay for it. I know I didn't answer your question, but you'll get more detailed answers as we go through the budget, which is coming up shortly.
Other questions from the council?
I don't have a question, I've got a statement, anyway. I brought it up, you know, in the budget, or in the audit. I went back five years, just using the figures from the audits. Went back to '14, got the numbers there, the bad debt numbers, '15, '16. And from '14 to '19 in five years, there is a little under $4 million bucks, is what that grew from in five years, in using the audit figures. And then if you figure that in, in time, it comes to about $60,000-$65,000 a month, is the rate that it's growing. And then if you look at it on a year's basis, say $750,000, if you have employees that are $50,000 a year employees, that'll pay for 15 of them's salary. That's, you know, looking at the figures like that, that's what got me interested in this. And it has, to me, I think it's something we need to do better, or we need to not do it, one of the two. And I'm, you know, I'm not looking to jump out, but when you're sitting here for the last five years every month, throwing $60,000 or $65,000 out, it's bad debt. You have, I mean, that's like getting a hold of a Wolverine, eating you up, you have to let go of it if you have to, but you can't continue to bleed like that. And this report is informative, and, you know, I'm interested to dig into it more. I've been doing a lot of research and talking to other places and that kind of thing, trying to get some ideas. But if you look at it that way, that's a pretty serious amount of giveaway. And you can't give away like that forever, you know, $60,000 a month. How many streets could you fix?
And I will say again, when we get into the budget process, we'll show more about revenue and cost.
Right.
And that will be another piece of this puzzle.
Right.
And I will also, we are proposing, in August, when we have our retreat, one of the things we're going to propose is an analysis of the best model for us and the citizens on providing EMS service to the area of the county we serve. You know, is it better to be Mercy Hospital running ambulance service? Patford? Some combination of Patford and City? We plan, in the next budget year, to do an analysis of what the options are out there, maybe what the best model is, and what it would look like as far as, if you choose this model, what would the service look like?
Right.
My understanding is, a few years ago, when it was proposed, and I haven't seen this in writing, but I was told that there was discussion about going with Emsa. And Emsa indicated that they would dedicate only one ambulance to our service area, and then any backup, secondary ambulances would come out of Oklahoma City when they were free. Well, that level of service is probably not something desired by our residents. So there has to be a mix in there of, yes, operating like a business, and what level of service can we live with?
And another thing that I've found in researching, say, Emsa took it over, and they said, "We'll put two ambulances up there. We don't have to necessarily flush ours. We can have the third one, or whatever, at the station for the transfers or the overflow." That way, we're basically out of it, but we're taking up the slack, so there is that level of service.
And that will be one of the options that we look at. It would be a combination between us and Patford.
Right.
So it would be a public-private thing. That would be one of the scenarios that we will probably look at.
Who knows?
And clearly, the quality of life issue is not necessarily the transfer, not necessarily the transfer between one medical facility to another, but it's getting them from their home to a stable environment where that initial medical care can be given, so. But it's a challenge. Leroy, one of the things that's stuck with me is, is one of the clients, Client Number Eight, has some similar numbers that we do, but their collections are 33%. Most of these, as you've identified, are in the mid-20s, like we are, but that one kind of sticks out. Do we have any idea what they're doing differently than what we're doing? Or is this, is that information not?
It's not available through this report. We would have to dig a little deeper.
Okay.
And what I would suggest is, you all have just seen this report tonight, I think it provides a lot of information, as you have a chance to digest it. If you will email us any follow-up questions, we'll try to research it and get back to you.
Okay.
If you look at their self-pay.
Self-pay is different in all of them.
But theirs is a lot lower than.
They're all a lot less than we are?
Yeah, but that's probably the big difference. Makes up a big difference.
Chief?
Mayor, I'm taking the staff and Dorf, but looking at their statistics, I'm going to say that's probably the same, Fire Department, and they get, we're all identical.
Mm-hmm.
They get the usual Medicare/Medicare mileage, which is about $34,000 per mile.
Okay.
And that includes a little bit more revenue from them.
Sure.
That could figure into that.
Okay, all right. Well, maybe we can look at that, too. Any other questions from council? Okay, so no action taken on that particular item, but gives us a lot of good information to chew on and move forward on, and I think answers some of the basic question that came up at the audit meeting. So, thank you very much for that report, Leroy. Item number 10 is city manager report. You're back on.
The only report that I think we should cover tonight is, with all the damages that we've had to some of our public infrastructure as a result of the flooding, particularly, there's been a lot of talk about pine. That's probably about a $250,000 fix. It will involve some engineering. The other thing people need to realize is, it came out in newspaper and stuff that Logan County was included in the federal disaster declaration. That was only for private reimbursement and programs. It takes a little longer to get the designation for the public part. They have come and run their numbers. There's a minimum level of damage you have to have to qualify. We have met those numbers. Probably in the next two weeks, we'll get the designation to be included in the national disaster area for public support. It's like a lot of federal programs and grants. If you make the improvements before they approve it, you don't get reimbursed. So some of those improvements, you have to wait until they declare you and give you the green light. Money you spend before that is 100%. If you wait till they give you the green light, you get 75% of that cost reimbursed by FEMA. So I hope our citizens understand, we are monitoring the various areas damaged. We're having engineering look at it, so that we're ready to make repairs. When we get the green light that we're included in the FEMA disaster area or national disaster area, then we will start being more aggressive on repairs and addressing some of the issues. But then it will take some time. We'll probably be using our rainy day fund to fund some of those, because it will take anywhere from six months to 12 months to get our 75% reimbursement from FEMA. And then when we get that, we'll put it back in our rainy day fund. So I just want to make sure that the residents of our community know we're not ignoring it, but there is a process to go through, and we are trying to pursue that process and get these things addressed, and we do have several things that we need to address as a result of the flooding. And I just thought that would be good to share with everyone.
Very good. Good information. Comments from city council members? Councilman Long?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Taylor?
Thank you, staff. I know you all work hard, appreciate what you all have done, all of you. And other than that, that's it.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
I agree with what he said, and I thank Leroy for that explanation. I think that people need to hear that, and that answers a lot of questions as to why we're not doing things, and we are just waiting to jump on it as soon as we can. Good explanation.
Councilman Channel?
I want to compliment the guys on the, that put the ambulance report together. It's comprehensive, it gives us something to look at. You can, it gives us a lot of ways to slice and dice it, and I think it's a good report, and hopefully, we can come up with something to do better by the time we're done, but I think it's a good job.
Good. Obviously, with all of the rain and so forth, we've had a lot of extra opportunities in front of us, and the staff have done, I think, a significant job in working through the challenges that that rain has provided us, whether it's roads, whether it's cutting grass, whether, all kinds of things that are impacted by our weather. But the staff has pulled forward and done just a fantastic job. We have a number of opportunities for volunteers to join various boards and commissions. We have a vacancy with the Forestry Advisory Board, the Board of Adjustments, the Guthrie Housing Authority. We have one more vacancy with the Guthrie Edmond Regional Airport, vacancy with the Planning Commission, and two vacancies with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Those last two, Planning and CVB, close the first week in July. The others are closing at the end of this month. So if you have an interest out there in our viewing audience, or right here in this room, please go to the website, get the application. We'd love to have you engaged in your community from a perspective of a board or a commission. Let's see. Item number 12 is to request approval to convene into executive session for purpose of discussing the hiring and employment for, and city manager powers in regard to personnel matters, and also to discuss the purchase and appraisal of real property for economic development. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
In a second, have a motion in a second. Vote, please.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Unanimous for, from all those present, to move to executive session.